On our agenda tonight, before we do the pledge of allegiance, the formal meeting, we have a public hearing scheduled on local law. We're looking at zoning, some changes to our zoning code. I'd like to thank the deputy mayor. He covered the August meeting and he approached the topic and set the public hearing for tonight. This is Kirk. Since we're opening the public hearing, I'll take my seat. The August session was, I was out on vacation as was trustee Jay Trapp. So it was a quorum of three. I'm familiar with it. Trustee Trapp has been providing copies of the other folks' here meeting. Since we're looking to further formalize the zoning map we have in the village of Red Hook, where we configure the zoning lines within our village, going district lines to match up to the property lines, conform a local law decree. And to do that, we also want to join in a secondary part of it, which is over in behind the Red Hook Commons area, there's a zoning code that we don't feel is appropriate anymore. It's, we want to roll that into the NMU, the mixed-use type code, which would make it contiguous to the rest of the NMU in that section. Just a step forward, it helps us start to solidify and make it a little more uniform. We do have more work to do, but that will be the subject of tonight's public hearing. It's more, we have things to look at with, part of our village still ahead of the highway district. I think that we've talked to some of the trustees that are looking at zoning more and see if we can get that upgraded and modified. But anyway, I don't know how much the audience sees some new members and some regular attendees. I just want to find my section here for this. So we're entitled with resolution classifying the action, establishing date for public hearing. That's done. We got that through the local law itself. Or we have that, I guess we're mending. It would give us categories now of residential 20,000, residential 10,000, general business, highway business, neighborhood mixed use, light industrial. Certain changes, like we know from other changes going pieces of law touch other sections of the zoning code. And the board has their paperwork in front of them. It's, we have to work a lot of stuff. And I don't know, Brent, maybe you could fill in. You had some discussion, secret part one, I believe, at the last meeting?
We did part one of the EAF and it went pretty smoothly. We signed out. We sent a copy of the resolution to Texas County and the town of Red Hook. And we also published a notice of public hearing on the local paper. So I think all requirements were met at the last meeting. There was no discussion, very little discussion amongst forward during the meeting. And so we're ready to move forward.
And we are working with our planning council, Rowan Hammond-Schall, who drafted the document you were mentioning. That being said, it's a rather mundane and somewhat complex issue, I think, but I'll open up the public comment.
I know you're increasing the NMU. Why didn't you increase it some of the other areas in the southern among nine that are mixed use currently?
George, I hate to do this, but couldn't quite hear. This thing's blowing some noise. Say it again.
I said, there's other properties that should have been part of the NMU, will eventually be. Why didn't you make it part of it now? I'm talking about off by Far House Lane down there and coming north. I mean, there's a bunch of properties which have businesses in them, which probably should be NMU now.
Just not a task, wouldn't ever a task. It's more, it's a bigger project to look at all, zoning. Should we have our 10,000? Should we have the highway business? Those of you who are waiting for a bigger analysis to answer your questions.
I think our intention is to look at that, you know, and we have some, like SS or others zones that we're looking to amend, or combine, or extend. And that's a bigger operation at this point. So we'll pick it off piece by piece.
Anything else out there? What we could do is, like I said, we didn't expect a lot of comment. I think we've heard the comment from the public bills, some micro change in the zoning. That being said, I would say we could close the public hearing unless the board had any other thoughts.
Some of it.
Second? All favor?
Aye.
What we'll do, board, is if you could add an agenda item number nine, we'll put, I think we have enough to get this worked on later tonight. And I think what we'll do now is we can open the formal meeting by standing and saying the pledge of allegiance. So then we'll get into our regular meeting.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, for the nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Here we are now in September. Daylight is leaving us. And one way we know the time of year in the village of Red Hook is hardscrabble day is in, what, four days, five days? September 17th. So those on panel watching on Wednesday, if you're ready to come out on hardscrabble day. We'll go into that more later. We'll do a little technical work. We had two meetings in the month of August. Like I said, I was not here for the regular monthly meetings. Deputy Mayor covered that. It was on August 8th. So I had him review those minutes. And I was here for the 18th workshop. So I reviewed those. Are there any other additions, alterations, or corrections from those that were here at the meetings in August? We're good. That being said, is there a motion to accept those minutes as submitted?
Some of them.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And in the audience, we have, I don't know, 200 people, sir. We welcome each year around this time. And we thought, at the difference to him, we'd get him in and get him out. So would you let go, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. It's a pleasure and delight, as always, to appear before you to seek a resolution authorizing court staff to apply for grants for capital expenditures for the courts. In the past eight years, Judge Martin and myself have gotten over $75,000 in grants to help run the court system. A lion's share of that coming into the village court. This year's grant that we seek would fund a number of items. First of all, a dehumidifier, a commercial grade dehumidifier for the wreckage storage area in the basement of Village Hall. It is somewhat damp. These records are valuable records. And the court system alone has to save some of these records for upwards of 30 years. And I know there's other important records that our clerk treasurer stores down there. So that would be, I think, a substantial improvement. The other items, a new photocopier for the court. The photocopier gentleman came in and said that it's difficult getting parts. The machine is, I think, six or seven years old. So a new photocopier for the court. And some security enhancements for the court, which if the board would like details in that, really should be discussed in our executive session. The other thing that we may ask for in the grant, because the grant is up to $30,000. It's open, up to 30,000. Mr. Mayor, you and I have talked about this. There's some tinkering has to be done with the court office air conditioning, and that may require some capital expenditure. We would add that to the grant as well, if the gentleman from the heating and air conditioning company comes and says there are certain items that have to be added. So that's what we're talking about this year. Other than the security enhancements, which again, I would be happily to discuss in executive session, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to entertain them.
Good. My thought was, two of the three items we have talked about.
Right.
They're fine. And it's funny you bring up your court chambers, AC, HVAC issue. I thought of that too, but I thought it might be too late to get you to bang it in. So can you amend your request?
Up to, well, I haven't yet made the request yet. I need the resolution first to authorize the request. The deadline is October 13th. So the sooner we get it, the better off we are.
I would think that that would be a good thing to add.
Yeah, sure.
Can you parenthetically insert that tomorrow or something?
No, well, the grant which is before you is open-ended. It just says, let me quote, "Grant monies from New York State Justice Court Assistant Grant, which might enable the village to obtain certain revenues to help purchase of certain mechanisms and ancillary apparatus as for the village or the justice court." So that's pretty wide open. That covers a multitude of needs. So I think that we're all covered. I just need the estimate of what may be needed.
Yeah, maybe, could you restate who the funding agency is there for the?
It's the New York State Justice Court Assistant Grant, which comes from the Office of Court Administration. Every year, they allot a sum of money, I think this year it's $5 million statewide. We've been very fortunate every year to pretty much get almost everything they ask for. So I'm optimistic that we'll get what we need again this year. As I said, the last eight years, $75,000 has come into Red Hook from the state for these grants. That $75,000, our local taxpayers having had to pony up in their real estate taxes to the village and to the town.
Yeah, quite frankly, they made great improvements to our operations.
Oh, yeah. Just about everything you see in this room was covered by the grant, with the exception of that clock, which I am willing to get a new clock if you like.
Actually.
We just need to get it repaired.
I think they actually, our maintenance facility guy tried to see if the clock repair is good, because our clock gets seen today.
That's history right there.
That's why we've kept it.
I'll make it a time.
Well, I might be able to put the repair on the grant too, if I get the estimate sooner enough.
Could you, Kirk, do you have a reservation?
I do, 22.
So I think, in like a form we do with each year, board, given the suggestions, it would make sense to me, the next day or two, I could reach our HVAC guy.
Right.
That sounds more internal. We just include another piece of estimate there. Max is 30,000. So just paraphrasing, I would ask a motion to approve resolution to authorize the court to submit a little grant to the state for a, that is a whole security and safety and comfort in our court. Is there a second? All favor?
Aye.
I need you to sign that and I'll go get some.
Thank you, Jade.
Thank you. Always a pleasure and a privilege to be here. I wish you all the best. And look forward to seeing everybody at hardscrabble day. Take care.
Bye, John.
So long.
Okay. With that, we can move into the regular progression of business and move into the financial world, since that's one of our jobs here, is a fiduciary financial success of the village. So treasurer, Sherella, would you like to go with that?
Sure. Account balances, general fund, $825,634.01. Water fund, $154,778.16. Trusted agency, $33,970.90. Materials management, $9,868.83. Petty cash, $32.20. Village green, $4,236.88. Hardscrabble, $11,037.84. Health insurance, $14,000. Capital projects, zero, which is where it should be. General fund, monthly expenses, $137,124.28. Water fund, $57,593.36. Trusted agency, $33,970.90. Materials management, expenses, $4,836.20.
Okay. Is there a motion to accept the treasurer's report? Second?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Just a few supplemental thoughts. Working on a few things here with the fans and people. We did get an extension to file that state controllers, AUD, the annual update data, is the acronym for that, which extends to the end of September, which means only about 14 days, 15 days away. It will be done. The good news is, I was meeting with the controller a bit last Thursday, and right now it's showing us possible fund downs in the area of about $115,000. So that's really good news. The village, looking at a lot of it is, in my mind, related to, with water phase two underway, we deferred a lot of chips and different expenses, certain highway maintenance and catch basin work that were actually in the phase two project. So, and that does reflect, and I went over this with the deputy mayor, who also heads highway. Remember when we funded the purchase of the new lighter dump truck? We took that money from snow and different winter-related lines, and that's already been debited out properly by the financial people. So the one on two, I took it home because, you know, anecdotally, we sit there in the course of the year, watching expenses, and they're like, wow, it sounds like a pretty high number. You do see it, a little more revenue on the positive side and a little less expense. So it looks to be, from the computer, from the tracking and the software, to be on. And if you all remember that graph we showed periodically, remember our goal was to get to the controller where we wouldn't be tagged with any negative points, the $270,000 fund downs. I think we were at 140 last year, if I remember right, plus or minus. It's another 115. It's 265. We're just about dead on where we need to be. So that plan we had of slow course of recovery, but planned course of recovery, looks like it's working out. So it's pretty amazing. The other good news is, after many, many pieces of paper being sent up to all of me, DASNY, that's the grant administering agency for the parking lot purchase money, they have confirmed they've got every piece that they needed to prove that we actually bought it, that we actually spent money to buy it, and so forth. And they advised Cindy on 15th of September, they'll be issuing the reimbursement check for like $74,000 and change. And just for everybody out there, we didn't pay that big a number, but it included, we had to do surveying, we had to do some environmental studies and different things. So we got all that included. So we still have, if you remember the grant, it was $125,000. So we have roughly $50,000 where we now can look at some improvements to lighting surfaces, paving. I don't know, I should take our paving back. But we've got Brent half working on some design on the front end, but it's beyond the $50,000 range of Brent's design. But it's, we do have some money left to do. What I'd like to see is some landscaping, some perimeter lighting. We also are working with, there's this kiosk that sits in the middle of it, which is technically operated by the chamber of Congress. And we're working with our lawyers and them trying to get some sort of licensing agreement where we have no problem with them being there, but we just need to establish some working legal relationship. Okay, if you're there, not that we'll charge you rent or anything along that, but just to document and log in and stay building and so forth. So we're kind of on it too. But those two things are great, the fund downs and getting that money back from DASNY. And as you all know, we use that South Bear Bank, Monet Credit Brutal, and then we have there, which is, do about a 0.35. It's a really, really low interest rate. So that's a board review. So those are two good things. Let's see. I will then do the police report. And we don't have a police officer here again. But for the month of August, incidents for 342, the breakdown is 259 in the village of Red Hook, 79 in the town, four in the village of Tibbly. As far as traffic tickets issued, it's a total of 126. It's 92 in the village, 10 of those are parking tickets, and then 34 in the town of Red Hook. Arrests were 19, 12 in the village of Red Hook, 7 in the town of Red Hook. So we've got that. What's like next? Final list here. Mr. Trustee Trapp, would you like to talk about planning and zoning in your report?
Yes, sir.
And maybe Tuesday, if you want to do some FD fire department stuff too?
Absolutely. Well, to start with, we'll go with the, and planning and building and zoning. Five building permits were issued in August. One certificate of occupancy was issued. Three certificates of compliance were issued. And four municipal searches were conducted. No orders to remedy, no stop work orders. One court appearance was actually resolved. It was a junk vehicle issue. That was resolved. Four complaints were remedied. And the inspection report is attached here for anybody who's interested in seeing it. The planning board August 11, 2016, had three items of business on extension granted for Anderson Commons, site plan approval granted to Baywright Realty, and site plan approval granted for another portion of Baywright property. The zoning board appeals had a variance, an area variance request, residential, was granted. And this will be public record if anybody has any interest at this point. And the money tendered in the month of August was $765. And, let's see, wait here. Just something, I know that we had chatted as board at one point about the block grant coming up, and what we might be interested in trying to direct our attentions to. And I chatted with you just before the meeting briefly. The application is due October 21st, 2016, at 12 noon digitally submitted. And by October 7th, we need to be in contact with Ann Saylor to get the eligibility of the project approved. The village, as you all know, is no longer in any of the low mod groups. So anything we do has to be ADA oriented, and we can only go for $100,000. It used to be like a buck fifty that we could go for. So, and you all know, we have to do the public hearing ahead of time, and we have to do the resolution and everything like this. So I don't know where we are with that. But I guess we had talked about, what was that acronym for the other money that you mentioned?
F A S T. It's a, I'll jump in for a second. We got notice from the state of New York that there's some surplus federal money moving through essentially the DOT world. And they're asking us, any projects that we would like to submit to it. The decision point we're advised is sometime in September. So we're on the 12th of September, so it's soon. What we put in, and I mentioned today, is remember, our last block grant submission got rejected by a county. We had some tree lights that would be around our handicap, not handicap, our crosswalks. When the pedestrian would arrive, there would be a light button they would push to signal, some more flashlights, flashing lights on the sign itself. We sent that request up to the state, since we had already projected some engineering, some costs and so forth. So we should hear on that. So the reason it's important is, we could try that again in block grant, or, but timing is a little tightly now. Like Jay said, maybe you could re-upset. The projects that we can submit are, have to be ADA related. Of course, the flashing lights and the crosswalks lend themselves to that, I think, still. We do have ramps that bring the issue there, and it makes it safer for everybody to cross, including somebody with some disability and so forth.
And it was also to upgrade the four corners too, for ADA compatibility. So we were trying to fold that in. And we were approved for eligibility last time on that. So, and we have most of the text, sort of speak, in the can. So, I mean, it won't be a long process to prepare at this time, if that's what we need to do, so.
If we could, Jay and board, in the real business part, I think we have a little more discussion. I think Jay's planting the seeds a little bit now, but.
Trying to, yeah.
We do have a little time, but like Jay said, we have to do public hearing, which could be at our October meeting. But if she's looking for, what was that date you said, 10/7? Was that informal discussion?
That's when it has to be approved, Ann Saylor, for eligibility. And then just sometime before that, a public hearing, you know, endorsing the grants like we did for Jonah and the court grant. So, and then October 21st noon for submission deadline.
We'll keep thinking about that until we hit the next part. What else you have there, Jay?
And other little thing, just to chat about very briefly, is that Ed and I had met once with the, with the fire department concerning their, their proposed budget and what we may need from them, and what they would need from us. Yes, sir?
I have to feel like pushing heat. I don't know.
It's hot in here.
Do I feel like heat or cold going out there?
Well, I don't think heat can.
Well, it does both.
Here's Sebastian. It's the geese one.
Sorry, Ed. That's just fan, not cool, that's what. Sorry about the technical.
You're just trying to clear the room. That's what it is.
It's getting a little warm over here. It's really getting hot down here. Sorry, Jay. So do you have?
Nah, it's quite all right. We, they proposed some, some money to us. And it was basically in two steps, as you, as we discussed before. And I guess something that I had always really struggled with was just as, if the board was going to take on a project and take a bid for a project, we would get a detailed list of the costs and what the costs were composed of and why we're paying this. And that's something I think that, I don't know about the rest of you guys, but I had always struggled with that. In other words, how do they determine the village's portion of their annual money that they would like for us to supply to them? And I'd like to, I'd like to see something, you know?
Well, we did, about 10 days ago, like, we submitted to the fire department some notes from one of our workshops sessions where you raised that topic. We hadn't heard of it yet. I invited them to our workshop this coming Thursday. We have another one within the same week. So I have not had a response, but we can see if they show up. One of our other considerations has been, right now, we as a village negotiate with a fire company at a point in the year, and the town negotiates at another point in the year. And in my mind, it's a little counterproductive in that, maybe it should be more unified. We're actually moving more towards the timing of the town negotiations. So it might be more consolidated that way.
So hopefully, we can get a little more information and maybe get those timeframes aligned and move forward later, in a more productive fashion. And I'm just looking forward to hardscrabble day. And any, any report on the weather? It's supposed to be good, right?
It will be.
Thank you.
I'm gonna make it happen.
You get the, you get the nails painted?
That Wednesday. It's the Wednesday before hardscrabble, I paint the nails. And that's a.
And that ensures everything.
Absolutely. Right now, it does look like rain. I'm gonna turn it around on Wednesday.
It was the county executive that used to take credit for the weather.
He used to paint his nails, and then he passed it over.
I mean, like we always joked, he had the habit of claiming when it was good weather, and then somehow not being around when it was rainy. So, but I have a board on that too.
Is Mr. Mackenrow coming? I'm just curious.
Don't know.
I offered to challenge him to tennis match.
There you go.
I know. We were thinking of that as a fundraiser.
Put some, and that up, and I'm back at the park.
There you go. So, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
One last thing.
Yes.
I'm done.
Well, thank you. For now.
Yes.
We'll put you to work.
For now.
Let's see. Why don't we move, we have, let's see. Trustee Artist, you want to go?
Sure, sure. Since you started on hardscrabble.
Segue in there.
So yes, hardscrabble is this Saturday. And the weather's gonna be great. We have main stage entertainment provided by Patty Smyth and Scandal. They had a couple hits back in the 80s that you probably know. I will not sing for you, but you can Google them. I will not sing for you, but you can Google them and it should be fun. We're gonna have food vendors and local music all day. New this year, the kids' Scrabble area, which used to be held at Key Bank Lawn, is gonna be held at the lawn just north of Little Pickles. Little Pickles has decided or volunteered to take it over and they're running with it. So there's gonna be a magic show eleven, one, and three o'clock. Music by Maggie Rothwell at two. And there's gonna be free building animals for the kids. There's also gonna be cornhole. Spelled that wrong on my report. Horribly spelled that wrong, I remember as well. As well as some other activities. So that will be on the lawn just north of Little Pickles. The parade will be at four. Please note that due to the Phase Two water project, our parade route has changed. It will start at the middle school, head down one ninety-nine, and then shoot up Route nine, ending at Moone Park. There's also gonna be apple pie alamud, farm animals, an old schoolhouse, and apple bobbing up at the Elmendorf. So make sure you hit that. And then, looking forward, we have Village Halloween, which will be Saturday, October twenty-ninth. I believe it'll be from one to three. I will solidify that for next meeting. That has trick or treating throughout the village merchants, as well as arts and crafts, usually pumpkin decorating. And then Dog Halloween for the four-footed friends will be Sunday, October thirtieth. I believe from eleven to two, again, I'll confirm that timing. There's trick or treatings for dogs throughout the village merchants, as well as animal rescues and other booths in the parking lots. And then further out, an event that we support, but we don't organize, is Red Hook and the Chocolate Festival. And that will be Saturday, November fifth, with activities throughout the day. And then materials management, for the month of August, we sold four thousand twenty-two dollars and fifty cents in tax. We paid out one thousand three hundred ninety dollars and nineteen cents. We had seven point one, four tons of single stream recycling and thirteen point two tons of garbage. And that's all I have.
Jen?
Yes, sir.
On the single stream garbage? What kind of a price increase are we looking at?
They don't charge us for single stream.
Well, the management over in Kingston, recycling management, is looking at a price increase.
Well, right now, we pay nothing. I haven't heard anything about an increase.
Okay. It was published in the paper.
Yeah, we haven't seen anything on ours, either. We probably hear about first and then at the gen, but I know what you're referring to, Steve, there's some turmoil and change in that research recovery authority over there and that. But no, we haven't, with, with no new billing sent us, different than it has. Everything we're still hearing is that single stream recycling is gonna be free. And just on the gins, we have the hardscrabble posters out and about. And we have a website up. This year, we, pretty cool, we have a little video clip on there from our film guy. And right now, the radio ads are out. So it puts Red Hook on the map for mid-September timeframe. And it's a really fun day. And as far as the weather, it's really rain or shine. We do have, it's horrendous. We tried to put the band in the high school gym, but we'd never really wanna do that. It's, maybe it was a hurricane, we'd do that. We've been through some pretty big downpours and gotten through it. So we're looking forward to it. It's nine months of work really for the committee. We've had really good luck. You know, to me, a success story, the sponsors are coming back and actually, in my opinion, they almost look to us anymore for being part of it. And like we all know, it's, it's really funded by the sponsors and enable us to buy these big name bands and put some world-class sound behind them and on that. Get some press, you know, Pecos Journal, Dutch News, radio. And we'll have, that day, we'll have WBST, Wiskin KZ, with BPM and PH. We'll be doing some live remotes from the day. Kind of puts Red Hook in. This year, we scaled back the food booths a little bit deliberately because we find that our restaurants, some of the better days, we've been feeding and selling beer to the crowds, you know, during the days. And like Jen said, we've enhanced the kids' gravel part a lot today, this week, this year as well, so it's.
Should be great.
Pretty good. Thanks, Jen. What we could do next? Why don't we have Trustee Art Trapp do water and then we skip to water phase two update and, with every?
Okay, the water report for August of two thousand sixteen. The water treatment plant treated seven million nine hundred forty-three thousand gallons of water and an average of two hundred fifty-six thousand gallons per day. And August of two thousand fifteen, the water, we treated seven million four hundred ninety, twenty, four hundred twenty-nine thousand gallons and an average of two hundred thirty-nine thousand gallons per day. One hundred gallons of liquid hydrochloride solution was used to disinfect the water supply and an average of three point two-two gallons per day. Beginning on August sixteenth, a series of nighttime work projects were performed to revalve South Broadway, replacing non-functional valves of, of over a hundred years in service, dating back to when the system was first installed. This work will continue into September as the leaking side street isolation valves that were replaced as part of the water system improvement project, Phase Two, was far removed from service. Project update during the month of August, jurisprudence, construction completed, pipe work, and all service connections included in the project. Remaining work would be, to be completed includes topsoil replacement, hydroseed application, property restoration, paving of all streets within the work area. Substantial completion of this work is expected in September, a full year ahead of schedule. Conservation tip of the month, leaking toilet tends to be most frequent culprit of high water load. Replacing bolts, flappers, valves on a regular three-year schedule prevents costly leaks. From taking a family by surprise is a far less costly than a high-water water tool. That's the water report.
Okay, thanks, Steve. As far as the real agenda, we have the project engineer out in the audience to talk a little bit and give us some data, but. Maybe Jay, tell you one thing over here, please. I missed it.
I missed the mic today.
What are you doing for sound there, Stefano? You pick it right off the camera?
This guy's switching.
It's a little skinny. Takes a second.
Red light's a come on.
Yeah, there you go.
Cool. All right, we're on. So as, as was just mentioned, the water work itself for Phase Two, you know, water mains, water services, water valves, hydrants, that part's been completed. And as you can tell, when you're driving through the Phase Two area, they're finishing up paving, finishing up topsoil and seed. That's the work that remains to be finished. You can kinda, everybody can kinda see the finished product now. Kind of tough when the roads are all dug up and I can't quite tell how things are gonna end up. But then you can see the, there are some of the streets like Garden Street and Fraley. You can see the flush curb and the nice, smooth asphalt. If anybody has any particular questions about that?
Well, when Steve read substantial completion, we, at our meeting Friday, there's still another portion to the project, which is over at the wellfields, the new storage tank and all that. You feel, that's got its own separate contract and separate substantial completion. The reason too is you might remember, we designed our water rate changes to reflect the projected completion time and so it's, you know.
Right, so it's easy to forget, but we actually have two contracts going. One is the general construction, as we call it, which is the water main work, street work. The second is the electrical work that's happening. That's the electrical and control upgrades up at the wellfield. And also, actually, the general contractor did the tank, the second water storage tank, which is in service now too. And there's some, there's a fence that has, has to be completed yet, controls and skater work that has to be completed. But that, that contractor, who's gross electric, got started much later, which is their, their priority of to get started later. So, you know, from a, from a financing and closing, we're gonna go into two thousand seventeen. By the time everything's wrapped up.
And can you talk a bit about the town-village interconnect and what we've done there?
So one of the key pieces, although not directly in the contract with, with Phase Two, is we had to upgrade the interconnect between the town water system, which is the north, and the village water supply. That was installed a while ago, I would say about in nineteen nineties, early nineteen nineties. But it hasn't, well, the pipes have been installed, the pipe, and the valves were installed, but it's been non-functioning as an emergency interconnect for a while. So that repair work was done in the last month so that it can truly serve as an emergency connection. Meaning that if loss of water happened in the village, we would get water from the town without any human interaction, you know, going up and opening valves. And then similar in the town side. If they lost water pressure on the town, then there would be water from the village. So that was a big positive.
Yeah, and that agreement had twenty-five year terms, so it's got about five years left. I think it was ninety-one, I don't know why, the agreement. So, and that interconnect repair was, within the terms agreement, shared cost-wise by the town and the village, so. But we're asking the town to start redrafting a modern version for the next twenty-five years.
Right.
And then what else? As far as other water news while you're up there, we completed our annual water quality report, AWQR. That's through our water operator. And it's been submitted to the county health department. And they've asked this year that we circulate it in regular physical postal service mail. And we did look at code and so forth and it is a requirement, so it'll be in the newsletter this time. So it's gonna be interesting reading and the first time. Usually, we put it on our website and had it posted on our bulletin board, which is one way to read some state regs. The county's reading it a little differently and their reading too can be a reasonable interpretation, so. That keeps them happy. You'll be seeing a little thicker newsletter when you get your September order. What else we have to Robert, in the water world? One, like bigger concept thought, you know, we turn over the calendar year, we kinda test ourselves with some bigger thoughts. One that's crossing my mind is removing into the sewer project. We've got this modernizing water department. Right now, we pretty much run it with the clerk trade office, our assistant, the water operator, and then our highway guys a little bit as needed, and outside contractors as needed. And if we are, and with quarterly billing, and if we are moving into sewer and so forth, I think we might wanna think of having a specific person in the building, some sort of water slash sewer, something where the focal point and instead of this mixed name group that some people collect the money, some people assign the repair. I haven't come up with the actual formula or model for it, but I'll test, we'll be thinking about that. It's gonna be a big deal when we have quarterly billing, both sewer and water. As we know, we've talked a little bit as a board, but the typical village budget, given years, combined with water and garbage and general funds is two point two, two point three million dollars. These projects, just the water project itself, is a three point eight million dollar project on top of the two point two million dollar operation. So it causes a little new stress and new things within the daily operations. And a four point nine million dollar other project on top, and maybe a Phase B water project on top of that. We're gonna be doing way more projects and moving more decisions and dollars and billings through this office than ever. How do we best deal with that? It's like, I take everyone's input.
Anyway. Do you have any updates on, on the AC problem or the power problem over there at the pumps? That we were tripping and everything?
Well, we haven't had any, any recent problems. As we speak right now, the control panel that gave us, gave us spits over the years is physically gone. And we have two, it was one control panel that controlled four pumps. So when it, when it had problems, all four pumps went out of business, right? So we replaced it with two modern control panels. Each one controls two pumps. So it's, you know, more redundancy, less, less likely to have everything go bad at once. And there's, you know, there's some stray electrical currents and whatnot that happens out there at the wellfield just by, I think because of the nature of it, big open space, a lot of wires hanging around. But we've been, we fared so, you know, this summer, we fared pretty well in terms of, you know, lightning strikes and whatnot. Better knock on wood here. But, so, that was, that's part of the improvements there with Phase Two.
Thank you. Anything else for anybody else? I think, you know, riding around, looking at the streets, what about eighty-five percent done right now and final toppings and so forth?
Right, they, I think they've done, as people who live in that neighborhood know, they did a lot of paving Thursday, Friday, and today. Tomorrow will be another heavy day of paving. And Wednesday and Thursday should just be just wrapping it up.
Wrapping up paving?
Paving, right.
They move pretty quickly, I'd say. Very quickly.
It's a lot of tons of asphalt on it, a lot of trucks lined up, yeah.
They had twenty trucks, I think, in service on Friday. And they're just one right after the others. It's impressive, isn't it?
Yeah. It's actually kind of, you know, some of the streets they did, like Garden and Fraley, that's straight line, right? That's the way paper likes it.
It's nice to come home.
Yeah, right.
It's nice and smooth.
They'll hump, right.
It's goodyfall.
Yeah, I wish I'd taken them before pictures sometimes. Our streets used to have like, have a hump in the middle, you know, and they're kind of ground down.
They were hump, but they were listing one side and then the other side and, you know, they're all.
Yeah, they're crowned on purpose now with a slope, you know, that goes to the sides and all per code.
Yeah, that's good. Thank you, Robert. I think, looking at the rest of the agenda, I know later on I wanna talk about Hoffman Farms water, but I don't think we need you for that. If you want to go north and come along today with us. Most anybody else have questions? Thank you, Robert.
Thanks, guys.
All right, so we'll jump back to committee reports, department reports. We have, final report would be from Deputy Mayor Kowalczek. Are you ready to go?
Yes, sir. Start with the village green monthly report. Current balances of the village green-related budget accounts are as follows. Community verification, two thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and twenty-five cents. Shade tree contractual, nine thousand six hundred and sixty-three dollars and twenty-three cents. I'd like to have these checked too, these don't seem quite right. And the village green checking account is four thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars and eighty-eight cents. The village green committee was, meeting was held on August fourteenth. And we received a list of trees from the highway department that they deemed in need of either pruning or removal. We did, as a committee, we examined those trees, as did our certified arborist from Integral Tree Landscape. And we all concurred that trees were, should come down. And we sent letters to the adjoining property owners notifying them of the tree's condition and the resulting actions. And we forgot from two, which we did correct. So there'll be seven trees coming down, three on, four on Fifth Street, one on Bassett Lane, and two on South Broadway. And we did receive estimates from Dave's Tree Service. And the total cost for removing the trees is two thousand two hundred dollars. And that will be deducted from the shade tree contractual expenses. And they will be moved this month. So just, just going back, the community verification budget line is four thousand dollars and the shade tree contractual is ten thousand five hundred. These are the amounts that we had allocated. Highway department, the village highway department is currently, and still picking up lawn debris brush. A re- lawn debris brush every first and third Mondays of the month. We should be up and running pretty good with Phase Two almost done, so we should be back to regular schedule. We ask that people limit the size of the piles to six feet by six feet by six feet, and please bring them out, the brush piles closer to the date, so we'll be picking them up. We will be picking up leaves in the autumn, and we'll let you know when, as soon as leaves start dropping, when that'd be scheduled for. The bridge located on State Route 199 at the intersection of Route 303 has opened the traffic. It opened on August 17th. And an amended transit amenities agreement and insurance certificate certification from the village rhetoric was mailed to Dutchess County on August 2nd, and this agreement confirms the village's eligibility to accept transit amenities such as butt shelters, ranches, and signs from Dutchess County. A new portable generator was purchased for the village water system repair at a cost of $1,468, and this will be deducted from the water fund source supply and power pump supply. And we're also looking to replace our backhoe. We have received estimates from Montana, H.O. Penn, and Robert Fink, and we're looking at a specific model right now. And so what I have listed was about nine different budget lines. Some of these are from the surplus that Ed had mentioned in AUD from last year's budget, and some are from this year's budget lines. And we have from Musaw, and there was a typo at this point. That should be paved New York program. So we'll be further looking at the budgets and seeing what we can afford, and hopefully we can do this without bonding. Now, reimbursement for the sale of scrap metal was received on August 17th for the amount of $217.30. Total revenue generated for this fiscal year is $590.16. Since inception in September of 2007, $19,838.08 has been generated, and the money from this goes to purchase tools and equipment for the village highway water and material management's department. And anyone interested in donating scrap metal can contact the highway department at 758-8600 of the village clerk's office, and the highway department will assist property owners by picking up scrap metal upon request. The intermunicipal task force of Red Hook Infrastructure by the reports, the Red Hook sewer projects. The meetings were held on August 5th, 12th, 19th, and 26th at the Red Hook Village Building. We reviewed the provisions in the IBC New York State Building Code regarding mandatory hookup. We also reviewed the status of the asset inventory regarding YASB 34, which is required by USDA, one of the funding agencies, the village. Also, we looked at the village sewer system ownership of capital components such as the tanks, pumps, laterals, mains, and treatment plant. Means and methods of securing easements for the O and M on property, plans for future expansion, and also reviewed the listed documents required by USDA rule development for an amended preliminary funding estimate and letter of conditions and application package for loans and grants. The village unfortunately was notified in a letter from New York State EFC that we did not receive a grant for Round Two Water, the Round Two Water Infrastructure Improvement Act Grant Program, but we've been automatically, more or less, re-enrolled in Round Three. We did confirm that last Friday, and this was for a $1.225 million grant. The Red Hook Economic Development Committee is trying to schedule a site visit to the Hamlet of Hillsdale, New York, where a step system similar to the one we're proposing was installed in 2007. So we're looking at beginning of October, I think, to look at the site, talk to the design engineers and some of the local business people, elected officials there. The Red Hook Village Water Project Phase Two meetings were held on August 5th, 12th, 17th, 19th, and 26th at the Red Hook Village Building. Pretty much, Robert brought us up to speed on all that stuff, and we are looking at decommissioning the existing elevated tank and the work completion micros electric at the Firehouse Lane Well Field Site. We had a meeting on August 17th with USDA, it's our monthly inspection and review of our budget with USDA, just some highlights of that. The expenditures this period was $252,045.2. We have a remaining balance, this is as of August 17th, of $1,039,903.16, and we have a remaining contingency balance of $15,831. So we signed the Engineers' Joint Contract Document and the Form E of the Rule Development Project Budget Cost Certification Report Number Six. And we are also notified on the same letter that we did not also receive the Round Two grant for the water project that we had submitted, but again, we were re-enrolled in the third round, and that was for two point... almost a $2.2 million grant for Phase Two. Community Development Block Grant for 2017, Jay touched on some of the points. There were several projects, I think we mentioned the push button activated in block crosswalks. Another idea was ADA-compliant handicap sidewalk ramps at other locations other than the Four Corners, and the town of Red Hook has asked us to possibly join them in a joint application for an accessible baseball field at the Red Hook Recreation Park Annex. So we'll be discussing that further, I think, in either workshop, and then also we have a public hearing to discuss the intent of the funds. The intermunicipal task force, which I'm a member of, met on August 5th, 19th, and 26th at the Red Hook Town Hall. We're currently reviewing formative business regulations for the town of Red Hook, and also recommendations for the village of Tivoli and village of Red Hook. And we have yet to receive the final special report draft that's forthcoming, according to the supervisor, which I spoke to today. We're also looking at a proposed Hamlet Business District in Upper Red Hook, and we're reviewing the uses in the existing B1 district, which Upper Red Hook is a B1, and also heading east of the village is a B1 district in the town. The Red Hook Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are members, there are no meetings at the EDC during the month of August. Community Preservation Fund Advisory Board, which I'm a member of, representing the village. There was a meeting on August 10th at the Red Hook Town Hall, and we reviewed draft maps of the community preservation project plan update as prepared by Dutchess County Department of Planning and Development. And the current balance of the community preservation fund as of August 31st is $537,090.51. There were no Red Hook Zoni Review Committees or Town of Red Hook Villages of Red Hook and Tivoli Shared Services Committee. There was a Sauk Hill Watershed Community Meeting held on August 1st at the Red Hook Village Building. There was present... there were presentations by Emily Vale, the Watershed Outreach Specialist from Hudson River Estuary Program, New York State EDC, regarding watershed assessment basics, and also a presentation by Rich Chauw, who's the Deputy Executive Director of Hudson Valley Regional Council, regarding water policy and laws in New York, tools and perspectives for stream protection. And... oh, this was a short one. And we also had a meeting at the Sauk Hill Watershed at Straken State University, and they're a university in Russia, and they brought over four members of their Echo Squad, and we had discussions with them on waterway protection toolkits. What can the Russian Echo Squad and the Sauk Hill Watershed Community learn from each other about community-focused watershed stewardship? And there were no Red Hook Together meetings held during the month of August. And that's it.
Right. Just maybe to give a little back and forth on a couple of points that were mentioned. One that is not too significant, with first pickup and late pickup coming, we're gonna put it in our newsletter, too, but we ask that residents keep their piles off the street, not piled in the street itself. It's just better for everybody, and that's the way we're designed to pick it up, so we'll remind you, too, in the newsletter. Yeah, the one Brent mentioned, and some of those funding requests we had out there, the $1.225, they're drinking, let's see, one's clean water, one's wastewater, but we're looking... nothing earth-shattering there, what we're trying to do, we're fully funded for Phase Two of the water project. We're looking to get some more, quote, "free" money from the state to offset the cost of Phase Two. And we were somewhat disappointed, because we've made many, many conversations with different folks at the state level, and we thought we had prepared a great application. And the impact on sewer project, too, is we're fully committed from EFC to a $4.9 million, 0% interest loan, but we're looking to see if we could knock that down again to reduce the capital cost. We haven't given up the fight, like Brent said, Round Three is still out there. We're trying to source out, like, who in the Mid-Hudson Valley got the funding and why, you know? Is there something that we need to do? So if you have any real good friends in Albany, anybody in the audience or television audience or up here, it seems like somebody somehow, somewhere can't hurt, so I've reached out to Cato's office, our assembly person, and we should probably reach out to Serena's office, too, or just, although our paperwork is impressive on its merits, it seems like we have to push some other sources and buttons, because those would be huge help to offset the costs if we can get them. We've got two great projects, and we're disappointed we didn't get them.
And we also have other grant applications out to the Consolidated Funding Application Program. So we're looking, we're still fundraising right now and trying to get the money mostly in grants. Loans we have, the grant money we have, and USDA also is still a contender in the funding of this.
See what else do I have stars you were talking about? Yeah, one thought, when Jay touched on CDBG, and then we'll talk more later, but one option is to join with the town, which Jay mentioned, our limit is $100,000, so is theirs, so in a joint fashion, theoretically make $200,000 available to the town project. But Brent, I had a question in your report. I've heard their field referred to as Champions Field, which is some use is very accessible, but it's not so much to the observer, it's more to the participant, to the sports person. So you know, at the county level, with the mods and the village, they like those type projects, and it could be, when you say accessible, it's not for me to watch the games, for...
For the players.
Yeah, so it'd be some sort of modified sports-type fields.
So there'd be the fields, there'll be restrooms, you know, all handicap accessible, and both for the watchers and also the players.
And I know, like, one consideration for me would be, combined, we would theoretically have access to $200,000. Would that do enough? Would that be enough for something? Does the town indicate anything on that?
Yeah, they did. They said they would be willing to entertain bonding for the remainder. So, you know, this would help offset their costs as much as they could, they would bond for the rest of the month.
Did they have an estimated total for the bond?
I haven't seen a number yet, and I did request that. Yeah, that was the question, if you wanted $200,000, yes.
Sure.
Okay, thank you, Brent. So we got through all that, we hit some of the regular business. Maybe one here. So I think we hit items one and two on the regular business agenda. Item three, Dutchess County Think Differently Resolution. Circulated something. The county executive has been pushing a concept, Think Differently, might see it in the press and as different media pushes. But overall, makes sense. It's really just the acknowledgement that the various communities within the county, and essentially in other parts of the state, too, are aware of and willing to work with the needs of different individuals that have special needs and their families. It's not a commitment really in any hard economic sense, it's more conceptual. Folks have in front of them, they had circulated a sample resolution, and looking through one of these county executives cover letter, it's, you can read the paragraph, "Think differently is a call to action, a genuine challenge to determine if we have it within ourselves, to pass our differences and treat others the way we would hope to be treated. Too often, too many special needs are overlooked and your unique abilities ignored. Instead, we seek to lift each other up and embrace all residents of all abilities." His vision is that cities, towns across the state follow the precursors, and I think right now I saw some press for the city of Troy, New York, with it, and that does be good for our village to do. I think we do think differently this way, and years ago, this building was converted to make more room and more access for handicap visitors, and when we do our street festivals, we take all steps for reasonableness. It's a test we look as a hard-scale committee. We can't make every curve and everything in the world totally compliant, but we do work at making it compliant to a reasonable test. This merely restates that. I just got a dry voice, excuse me. The resolution I thought was self-explanatory, and I would like to be the leading edge with it, if you could. Jay, I need to get a glass of water. You fit reading the resolution?
Yeah.
Are you gonna read it to that? I'm gonna go to it.
Choked up. All right. What will be this number, 23? Resolution calling on the village of Red Hook residents and business owners to adopt the Think Differently Initiative to assist individuals with special needs and their families. Whereas the Think Differently Initiative is about promoting awareness and acceptance of all people and advocating for the inclusion of all individuals living on the autism spectrum and with special needs, and whereas our state and communities are stronger because of our diversity and differences, and whereas, according to the Center for Disease Control, over 55 million people, or approximately 19% of Americans, have a type of disability or special need. And whereas for some people with special needs, the very things that make them unique can also keep them on the sidelines, separate from those who might not understand their differences or uniquenesses. And whereas it is important to promote and provide guidance to those with special needs on how to access publicly-supported services available to them in the community. And whereas it is important to encourage and educate the community and business on ways they can make facilities and services more accessible, and on how to train staff to welcome and support special needs customers and coworkers. And whereas the goal of this initiative is to provide a supportive and inclusive environment for all individuals of all abilities by supporting community events to expand family-friendly opportunities for people with special needs and their families. And whereas adopting the Think Differently Initiative is an important statement that our village officials, business owners, and residents can make to show their support for the differently-able children and adults with special needs and their families. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the village of Red Hook residents and business owners do adopt the Think Differently Initiative so that there are... so that they're... so that all are better prepared to communicate with and support those living on the autism spectrum and with special needs.
Thank you, Jay.
You betcha.
Like I said, when I was talking, the county executive's vision is that other cities, towns, villages across the state follow our lead, and together we make the state a model for the nation, in helping these people that recite it in the resolution. And I do think we, everything we do, we try to keep that in mind, I think this is more a formal statement of it, and I would offer that as motion and ask for a second.
Second?
Like I said, it's, we're not adopting anything... Like I said, it's, we're not adopting anything with a financial imperative or zoning linkage or anything, it's just, it's a statement to create sentiment and continue the sentiment. So I support it. Any other discussion? I have a call to bulletin, and I think, on paper?
Aye.
Your whole ayes, thank you very much. All right, item number four, CHIPS, status of streets. I thought if you could talk about what we're doing the next three, four days, a week or so, and why and what we're working on.
So for this year, we had compiled a list of possible projects and what we did, because of all the work that the village is doing on Bender Road and some much-needed repair on Thompson Street, we decided to go with those two projects for repaving through the CHIPS funding. We did shop around some prices and we selected Best Paving and Seal Coating Incorporated, who are the same people who are doing the paving on Phase Two. They've already staged and have the equipment here and they came up with the best price. So the prices that we have right now for Bender Road from West Market to Fraley Street, they estimate theirs on square footage of asphalt, 12,000 square feet. Proportion cost is $17,400 for Bender Road, and we did receive another one for Thompson Street. It's just a low-line area right off of West Market Street that we'll be doing at the entire street. $9,900 square feet of blacktop and the price came in at $13,650. So this will pretty much be our balance, use the balance of our CHIPS for 2016, '17. Well, should have some, little bit over, we did have some catch bases that we wanted to repair and we are still looking at other sources of funding such as our street maintenance budget line that we could look at, but we thought, well, the contractors are here, they're doing a good job, we got a good number, and these are the two best projects to be voted for within 2016, '17, so that's what we're doing.
Good. Thoughts or questions on that? Jen just wandered off for a glass of water too, and the air must be dry in the building today. Gee, is that the center of the temperature that's at like?
Well, this one's hot.
Can you cool it back a little?
We're still here.
I think I flipped it to cool, but it doesn't feel too warm.
Set for minus 12.
Let's see, we did Cork Brad, let's, of course, CDB, CDBG 2016, looks like the dash instead of zero there. I think individually, we've kicked this around for six weeks or something, trying to figure out what project would make sense. Like we said, we might have that FAST money coming from the state to do the control at the mid-block crosswalks. I guess I'm inclined to consider moving with the town to work on the accessible contribution for the accessible field unless there's something that we can directly grab. Jay, you might have been suggesting redo parts of the one we submitted last year, like it's still a thought.
I'm just curious as to, as to when you might hear from the FAST money. I know you were expecting to hear from it like soon, right?
Yeah, right, yeah, not so FAST, fast.
Sure.
Yeah, I'd rather do something directly beneficial, invisible within the village, but our people do use the rest part. I don't know what the timeline is for the, do you have a sense if they got you in a grant or they went to a bond, it'd be a year that we'd be done or?
I think they're just tossing it around right now.
I'm not opposed to the accessible field idea, but you know, I would, I would like to, you know, tidy up those places if we had the opportunity, the crosswalks and things, you know.
I guess we never did really understand why we didn't get it last year.
Well, the reason I heard it was, you know, more people are taking advantage of it, more in need, but we were strongly encouraged to resubmit our application for consideration for this year, so those are good words.
I like those words, yeah.
And this has happened in the past too, if you remember the water treatment that we proposed, the wells five and six, we didn't get it one year, and then the filing agreement didn't receive it, so it seems to be patience is virtue, maybe payoff, I don't know.
That being said, we probably have, on our computers and Jay's, we could just dust off the last one and...
It would be a matter of like redoing the application and then dusting off the graphics and the text and everything.
And if we were to get the FAST money, we could just subtract that section out and make a lesser request for this. Could that be, what was left on the other side over there? Yeah?
I mean, I'd like to see with the FAST and see what, you know, a hundred thousand dollars, I'd like to see if we can spend as much of that as possible, that's all free money then.
You bet.
The block grant.
Yeah, so if we get FAST and just put in the cross signals and just do the four corners, I would think there'd be more. I would love to see more added, you know, just so we can take advantage of that money.
So take the FAST, the signal part out if we get it.
Whatever FAST offers us, I think we submitted, basically what we had submitted for our last year's grant application, and so that pretty much covers it, then we're then in a position to figure out what to do with, you know, either additional projects, such as tidying up some of the other ramps that won't be done, or assisting with the town, or any other idea that anybody has. So I think that's the purpose of the public hearing, is to discuss the intent of the money, and we gotta be pretty...
Could we throw, we're gonna stamp a few intersections with Phase Two, but could we say that somehow...
I think I'm pretty light on our feet in terms of getting the application ready, you know, but the other things are the eligibility and the public meeting, the resolution and that sort of thing, you know, to figure out what it is.
I guess...
Somewhere we can follow up with Mr. Epstein this week, see where he stands and where the state stands on the grant and...
Well, we have the works out Thursday, why don't we, we'll follow up with the state and thank something out Thursday. Okay. All right, so Zoey Board of Appeals, five-member board, chairman visits us monthly at his, our meetings, and he does a great job at his meetings. One of the members, Ellen Kruger, is indicating she feels it's time for her to move on. We, I, we know she was helping us and it's at a point where she needs to do that to resign, so I said, I thanked her for her time and her reference, she was on our planning board for a long time and then did some ZBA work. She doesn't need to turn in, and I asked her, there's a fumble, just short statement saying she's actually leaving, but it's happening. So they have a meeting, I think, set for October for the next agenda. And I have a person that many of you know, I'll put his name out, we can talk about it, and I like to appoint him tonight. He now lives in the village, it's Marty Relling, and he lives on East Market and he runs, I'd call it like a boutique realty business, he's a, I'm just a realty, he gave me a little curriculum vitae here.
Is that O-E-L-L-I-N-G?
Uh, we will, both long, you mean?
No, is that how he spells his name?
Oh, 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 sorry.
R-E-L-L-I-N-G.
That's right, we both want. I'll have to find, it's, it's the Liederlander spelling, no? It's not popping out of my pile here, ask the nearest neighbor.
I'll cover for you for a second, just for the record. Tuesday, October 4th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Millbrook, 2715 Route 44, we have our first hall class for the Dutchess County Planning Federation, Supporting Agriculture with Community Planning. It's $5 and you get dinner, same routine. On Thursday, October 20th of this year, 5:30 to 8:30 is the second of three classes, tackling difficult seeker topics, community character, historic archaeological habitats and endangered species, same place, Route 44, Millbrook, five bucks, you get dinner. And the final is Wednesday, October 26th, 6:00 to 8:00 p.m., Designing for Density, Meeting Your Communities' Challenges for Land Use Needs. So $5 and dinner, and that's what we have, I forgot to mention that earlier, so.
And I know you circulate that to our planning secretary within certain ways that our people, I heard certain people already signed up for this.
Three or four people has already signed, yes.
Thank you, Jay. And I found what I was looking for too. Like I said, Marty's lived here a couple of years and he's volunteered to work with the town Economic Development Committee. We've seen that the meetings, he seems to be a regular attendee, he seems committed to what he says they do. He told me he's a broker owner of Martin Relling. For Cindy's question, R-E-I-L-I-N-G-H, it's a little different.
Yeah, a village resident since February 2012, lives here from London Acres area. His interest in his ZBA stems from his real estate business and a desire to serve the community. His qualifications stem from the profession and he's got a history of participating in various boards and commission committees. For the record, he's an independent real estate broker since 2011, and he had been an agent with Boiker for several years in Kingston. He has 325 hours of continuing real estate education under his belt, a member of the National Association Realtors. Serves on Joint Town-Village Economic Development Committee, now his second year. He has some hobbies, which he cites, he has a PhD in theater history from Bowling Green State University, Ohio, a master's in theater from St. Martin. He says he grew up in the Red Oak Smells in Tampa-Kipsey, went off to college and now he's back. So he expressed an interest in, I think it'd be good to recommend, and I explained to him, if a particular case happened to involve something that has to do with his real estate clients, now he would have to recuse, and he understands that. But I'd rather have a full board for that ZBA, the work it is important and the correct odd number of votes helps in many vote scenarios. So with that, I would recommend and make a motion that we appoint Martin Relling from the Village of Red Hook as a ZBA member to replace resigning member Ellen Kruger.
Ray, did you break in on the rookie, George?
I've owned Martin for twenty years.
That's good, then.
Nobody else, apart? No, we've been asking around, a couple people said something, but then I didn't follow up with maybe the next step, so, and I think he'd be good. So I heard, I mean, I think it was the second, I don't know, I heard a question, any discussion on the board?
I'm fine.
Favor?
Hi.
Just a little, a little fighting tomorrow.
Forget to tell him about the $5 dinner, it's just now. That's why I won't sign.
Sign him up.
I think I need to wander to the projector this time, I'm moving around the speaker for something. Set, well, too high, I mean, nobody listens.
I have a technical...
And I think I'll put a couple of images up here first, let's see. Load my computer. What we did focus is, past week or so, we had some more meetings with Hoffman Farms, we've been updating the board routinely. Essentially, we have a logic and a thought process, which I want to explain for those in the audience and the panel world. What I did, I built a spreadsheet where I took the known cost factors from water Phase Two, which has to do with escalation, it's main construction, tapping, certain things that the developer would be doing in regards to the Hoffman project, and trying to look at logical analysis of, we know in a town, we now charge our town water customers two times the village. And it's apparently a theory, a formula that was developed for our time, and when one analyzes it, one realizes what they're trying to address was at some point in time, costs required by the village to build the main, to get out to these places, locations, and then we continue to have the liability of the annual repair costs that could develop if something breaks and we have to fix it. To our detriment, those locations are not really properly in water districts of the board zones of assessments, which are not a good situation for us. We still would have to go out and fix it, repair the main, or we're at entirety, it could be a major, major expense, so we still have this cost liability that we spent once and now have the repair plus hanging overhead. What I've got here, I can try and make it bigger for folks, let's see. Took numbers, you see on the top, road Phase Two, cost computed to Hoffman Farms, Phase Two quantities, just so everybody knows, the linear feet of pipe that we built in Phase Two is essentially about 1,000 linear feet, Hoffman Farms project is 5,020 feet, I think the math is about 46% difference or a factor. So what I did, I looked at various major unit components and then projected across some, I don't know, but lawn restoration in the Phase Two was a big number, but in steam things for the Hoffman project, we really have very little. But then other things, certainly totally bleated out, road under drain, it says there, I could actually take that column out. The yellow column is where I'm putting factors that I think would relate to the Hoffman Farms project. So I'm gonna go down through the process, let's see.
Do they base on quantities, right, of that 5,000?
Yeah, yeah, it's a proportion, so to speak. It's essentially taking 5,020 over 11,000, that's about 46% there. And then many, many lines, the Phase Two project is about 30 days invested, this is just taking things that, that contract we would touch on. And then... And then, so this analysis, that piece of what he's putting in the ground, hydroics means connections. Despite his name, that can be related to meters later, service connections. It's about 862,000 dollars worth of project in the ground. And then what we're looking at is reconnect with master meters and certain things we'll update you on. We can talk about, this is a big change. Put this in the mix, it's an important element for us, having a developer. Maines to Route Nine, it's spur, it's linear feed computation. Right now, in that neck of the woods, they'd be pulling the water from essentially Red Oak Estates, the network at the web in Red Oak Estates. They would be building a main down Old Farm Road to get the project. I think it was, we would rather see loops in our systems anymore. If we could continue to have Old Farm Road at their expense, easements and buying project back for the main. Main on the roadside, or providing back for now, connect to a loop on Route Nine side. You could loop down the neck of the woods. Benefits them, benefits us, and we could do it. So when I was crafting, I want to move forward on this a lot, spread further. We've been going back and forth on, okay, the town resident was the customer, pays two times. What should the town resident in this district, the developer's going to work with the county, create a zone assessment with Dutchess County Waste Water Authority. The authority will do all operations and maintenance, including bill reading, billing, I should say, meter reading, billing. We would just get one number from the county for gross scale once used. And then we would be setting our meter reader, anything like that out. It would be in our billing system, it would just be gross number. We're talking like so there's 102 different residents' meters. I was trying to structure win-win, we're going back and forth in our board and with the developer, the town, the county. The board might reverse and write low offers from the developer. Especially, right now, we have offered, I would ask, moving forward, definitely we're input here, but saying, cost of water would be 1.525 times the base village rate, subject to any and all increases that the base village rate goes with. But contingent on that, developer has to provide main loop connection. There's a component, we bring it to nine. And then, right now, our nine drop-ins around Osser Savings Bank at Hyde. And that's in Baywright property there. Baywright has offered at his cost to drop Southwood on Nine, so you all farm for Tyne. They're hoping someday is that perhaps the zone of assessment could be expanded to pick up, it's called Hachmanakan, it's Hachmanakan there. But I've expressed to them that we're no longer in the business of selling to town customers that are not in the district or zone of assessment. So we can't take it now, it's going to be, he feels, he could lay on that. I think they feel between the two projects could be a joint positive for both of them. Having the loop as well, because right now, if something were happening in Red Oak Estates, it would be in effect, Hoffman Farms capacity that pulled water. So this way, we've got spur connection, loop connection, but you know, water in the web flows both ways. The one thing it does change, instead of one master meter, I've written two there in that spreadsheet, because you've got two sources of water coming in. They said, they had a way, maybe the engineers on the family, because the actual houses on Old Farm Road, they would do direct taps, it was like nine to 12 of those. And then they would do one master meter within their project. It would still be all under the Waste Water Authority, it would be our meters, our meters to me, it would just be, the authority would total up those nine to 12 individual consumption meters, not the master meter. It would get consumption number and then it would give them a bill.
Okay, that's good. I'm losing track. Your voice is changing, your level is changing, I'm losing track. You're talking nine to 10, and a master meter, what's the nine to 10?
Okay, should I get a microphone?
I would say so.
Because it's hard.
Because you're looking at that.
Yeah, it's tied with our square, or linear rather. Let's see, checked in. So anyway, we originally had two master meters. Well, one was in the original plan, that would pull just from the Cambridge area, the Red Oak Estates area. But that didn't allow a loop, and it really created a dead end further down in our system than the Hoffman Farms project. So I thought, well, you would need two meters to get the flow from the Route Nine side and the Cambridge, Red Oak Estates area. And then you would, there'd be net meters where you, the math and algorithms could occur where we would know what's going into the project. But then their engineers came up and they, well, on the Old Farm Road piece, the houses that are actually on Old Farm Road, could be individual meters owned and operated and maintained by the authority. But then the master meter would be just inside the project and it would do the same thing. It would only be one master meter for them to build and incur the cost of. And then the 12 on Old Farm Road would be built, again, by the authority, but not through the master meter, beyond individual meters. And within their project, they all have individual meters. Each residence has individual meters.
So they would actually have 13 meters?
Yeah, if it's 12 individual houses and a master meter. Yes, and the master meter went through it a little bit, with their engineer, Jay, he said, a master meter would be $100,000. And we had nothing like that in our projections from our people. And I don't know if you deal with that much, meaning the master meters, but it sounded like a high number.
Each unit has a meter, but for us, in order to keep the loop going, they're going to bring it, because there's several, eight or nine of Hoffman Farms project on Old Farm Road, and those will all have individual meters coming off the main.
Right.
And then the main will go into the Red Oak, into Hoffman Farms developed through a master meter. Then, once it's through the master meter, that's our meter, that will, not our meter, but we'll get the revenue from that. But then that supplies all the other units in there which individual meters.
So instead of having one meter, one master meter, they'll have 13 masters, or 13 meters.
So with the dead end, we could put, the original plan was to put a master meter, as it left the village. And now to create the loop, we have to get everything through, so we're capping off that main, so it can continue through, to get as much as Hoffman Farms, but those that all be administered still by the authority.
Right, and then the question, then the question comes in. Since behind the master meter, they're responsible for all maintenance. Who's responsible for the maintenance of those nine meters? And not just the meter, but
The infrastructure.
The infrastructure.
The plan, the concept, what we're headed for is, it would not be us, it would be the Waste Water Authority. The only thing in the end that I would see us being responsible for is, when they build that main, that makes the loop. I think we should own the main. We don't want some private entity owning part of our system. And we would buy that. And these are, they're all good questions, and we'll get them further, but we would pick that up in contingencies. It's going to be a lot of engineering and a lot of legal work on escrow, on the developer, not us. And, but, because that's a good question. Anything in the project really, other than the main, will and should be, in my opinion, a Waste Water Authority to deal with. And that's the concept. And one must be number two, that 1.525 times our rate. There's still a charge that the homeowners have to incur down there, which would be from the Waste Water Authorities operating and maintenance exposures. Now, onset, it's not going to be a lot of maintenance, but at some point it will be. And that number's pretty heavy, and it actually pulls them by numbers I've seen over the two times factor, which I think is important to our other town residents. These folks, they're not getting the full water product at 1.525, meaning they're not getting the service and the repair and the meter reading line.
From the village.
Pardon me?
From the village.
From the village, right.
Yeah, but they're still getting the water from us at 1.525.
Right, but without, we have no liability for any repairs in that project, so that's a huge difference.
So we would be responsible for maintenance of the main, coming down Old Farm Road and then through the loop of the South Broadway, Route Nine. So if we're connecting to Red Oak Estates, we would still be responsible for, we would own the main and still be responsible for maintenance of that main as it connects back into the spur, basically. So that's all of our responsibility, except for those nine or 10 single-family home service lines.
Well, I think, yes, and quite frankly, I think we need to and should on that. We wouldn't, like I said before
But we're also responsible for maintenance of that.
Yeah, once we own it, we're responsible.
That was your question, right?
Right, that was my question. We will assume the maintenance of all that.
The main, yeah, the main.
Just the main.
And if you look at, let's see.
Now, one, and I think maybe you've answered it, but on the main, those 12 taps coming off the main, will they be treated just as a regular customer, a village customer, when it comes to maintenance? Because we're going to maintain the main. Who's going to maintain? Is it up to them, or the Dutchess County Waste Water, water Waste Water to do the maintenance beyond the main?
Well, two thoughts. I think we would need to rely on our code that essentially from the curb valve to end is the customer. And then we're from the curb valve out to the main, so that one run from the corporation valve to the curb valve theoretically be our exposure. But I think
And those 12 customers would be charged at a rate of 1.525, right?
Yeah. But on your questions, Steve, there was a second part. The authority would read those. And what I, second part that I raised to them was, you know, how about the Nullwood Commons? We have theoretically 2,500 per tapping fee when somebody asks us to tap them. It's designed to pick up road destruction or reparation costs in our time and our engineers' time. With Nullwood Commons, we did something where there were no roads in existence. And so we charged them $500 plus all materials per tap. Because we weren't digging into roads and we weren't damaging any of our infrastructure to make a tap. Could be feasible, that, this would be the same way. I haven't crossed that bridge with them yet, though, so. But I think that would be, depending on how these, when you think of it, they're going to be constructing the main, the main will be exposed, they can do the corporation tap, they can run to the curb, they're really not going to be in any roads. So I think that, that theory could apply, the same theory.
So the main's not going to be in the road, touching the road at all, it's going to be out to Route Nine?
Right, they're looking at easements to stay away from the road. They're looking at Hoffman or the Ruby side.
Okay. Once that's completed, are those easements going to be transferred over to the village?
That would be our goal, yeah, that would be, you'll see.
Because, because the existing town customers, we experience that problem all the time.
Right.
No easement.
Right. Yeah, now we won't be making that mistake again, and you'll see, as we, these are all good questions as we get further. I'm just trying to, right now, set the math. If you look at this, for all practical purposes, it's about a million dollars worth of infrastructure that's being built down there that we would not have to build. Even running the main is in that number. And I'm not going to attest that these are perfectly accurate, but it's taken, like I said, from Phase Two, where things looked to apply, and the quantities were adjusted, that's where it comes in. And let me just go to another exhibit. I'll move this around a little bit, but this is their latest sketch. And this is without the conjecture, the point we just came up with, as far as, what I'm trying to find is the rate, and then enough done that benefits the village on top of the rate. So this is, we'll take it up. This would be Cambridge. Can y'all see that, or should we dim some lights or something? And this is what they're proposing to build as far as the main, to serve their project. They'd be, I don't know if you can see my cursor moving, but they would be picking up where we end and then just continue down. And when one looks, it makes a dead end for them. The water goes into them and just spins around in there and really never flushes out. So as I was talking with them, I said, well, what if you do, right here, this is the end of the main they're going to build, can you come over here and come out to Nine, or come through here? Or, yeah, one option was just follow the town, Old Farm Road on the shoulder right away, something, not dig the road. So their inclination is to stay and get easements, because they're dealing with a lot of these people. I think this is Hoffman, or some relative to Hoffman here. This side here is room two. So they'd be adding this spur, and then we would take this whole thing with easements in the end, just a proposal. And we wind up another, I forgot this one. This just looks like similar. It's a, instead of an aerial photograph, it's more of a schematic of it. But Steve, on that question of the number of houses they're counting, these look like one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and something here, 10.
That's where the mailboxes, I think, is the post office.
Oh, yeah, they're central.
So that's where the master meter will be located.
Where's that?
This thing here.
It's where they, instead of, they have their post boxes for the individual units located in one building. They look like a little post office, but that's where the master meter will be located.
So I go there, thinking is, put these on individual meters and have the master here. But then somehow they would move, the engineering would have to be worked out, but the master meter would be established so that they don't need one master meter. And then they felt like tapping ease would save them having two master meter costs. Like I said, they were projecting a master meter cost to be $100,000.
So it looks like only nine taps on the main on Old Farm Road, then one going in from the main to the master meter for the rest of Hoffman Farms.
No. Just curiosity, does the master meter have a shut-off valve?
Well, I don't really know the answer. We could ask our engineers. I don't know. I know they were describing this compound where there's high flow and low flow. They're very sophisticated. Chap, do you know anything about that?
I'm not sure how it's designed, but it's not untypical to have a shut-off there.
Oh, I think, Steve, there would be similar to what our water means. We have several shut-offs, so we can shut the, a section of the loop off that we do repairs, you know, that kind of thing.
Sort of isolate streets and things.
We haven't seen it as that big design. What's your last?
Essentially, what, like I said earlier, what I'm trying to get forward for us to act on is, okay, if we have a rate and we get these benefits, then it's going to be actually implementing the construction and doing the legal work to get all that. But it's But it's not, it's not going to be our problem. And quite frankly, when, you know, we've had multiple meetings and the board's been in them with professional representatives of the project owner. But I was in one of the direct meetings with the project owner and he wants to get it built and he wants to work with us. So it's, and the way I get it, it's like they're roughly throwing a million dollars in their worth of infrastructure. We'd be getting the cash flow when it's built out, 102 units times 1.5. Will be a higher base rate at that point, but it'll still be 1.5 two five, five times that rate. And then we could have the benefit of that loop and they would get that benefit. The other part is timeline-wise, nothing's drawn on this. We're just, I think, what they need from us is the final yay or nay on the rate. And that's been the objective discussion amongst us. What we're trying to figure is essentially it's a town project. And we raised that annexation concept, but it's, it looks like it's still not in the cards right now for us to do that. The zone of assessment will work. I think it'll greatly improve our district, our, our village district, meaning we'll have a really formal person that we're selling water to and it's going to be professionally managed. It has a good outcome both ways. We'll have cash flow when our water department, when it's built and then we'll have a loop down there. And the other parts of it are, as you know, for the village to sell water, we have to prove, A, that we have the capacity and surplus to do it. And we know we have that from the various meetings and presentations and so forth. And then on top of that, we have to set the rate we want us charged for it. The hang-up has been this two times number, but like I said before, if you take that 1.5 and change and add what the authority's going to charge those customers there to read it and maintain it, they are paying more than twice the rate. So I don't feel we're penalizing any of our current customers with this and we're getting this awesome benefit of a loop down there. The other part we'd have to modify, after phase one was done, we resubmitted the DEC, our supply capacity. And that includes some of the old Harskabel Commons, Harskabel Plaza, things that were, I guess, done 20, 30 years ago. Nothing ever got built there, but that's still in our capacity estimations. And the, and the Hoffman Farms capacity is, as we saw from those charts months ago, it's, it's in our, definitely within our capacity to supply too. So that being said, what the authority did when I was mentioning the 1.525, and again, I've told the developers there with it, you know, negotiating based on input from the board of trustees, but that it's, we are as a group, the water conditioners. Bridget sent me something, let's see. July 21st. They have created a template agreement. And again, it's, it's just that they would work with us and it's, it's a huge project. You kind of go back to what I said. Right now, we have a water operator, the highway guys, clerk's office with the treasurer, and these are huge projects. So how do we best deal with them? Let's try to open. This is a template draft from the wastewater authority. And again, as I envisioned it, with a lot of meetings and travel with engineers and our lawyers and so forth. But it states those numbers we've seen as a board as far as what their maximum daily demand would be and so forth. But here in red is equal, the rate would be 1.525 times the water rate in effect to the village customers.
Is this the same template they submitted, but the only change would be that, what was in red there, the rate?
Yeah, and compared to tapping this line by my, but investor meter responsibilities. These parts are about to be changed.
I think that's the last paragraph. There's the sunset, right, there's the last page.
Sunset. If the water authority does not commence taking water within five years of the town granting a final subdivision site plan, the agreement should become null and void. So let's see what we have here. So I hand it out, it was a draft resolution. I'll call it up on the boards here too. Let me just find it here. I'm looking for my paper version to bear with me. So I'll paraphrase and then we can get specific, but as we know, it's essentially a town project. Town board is the deciding agency on whether or not the entire project goes forward. So that's the first paragraph there. And it reiterates, as a board, probably 18 months ago or maybe more, we did indicate in a formal letter of intent that we would want to sell water unless we could prove capacity and surplus and establish a rate that we could work and live with. And the resolution tested the project is outside the village's water service area. The board has reviewed estimated costs associated with servicing residential users within the proposed Hoffman Farms project. Sites Dutchess County Water Wastewater will be the sponsored billion collection. We'll get more specific. Fourth or fifth paragraph talks about the 1.525 on the current village water rate. Like I'm trying to set up, the next page is the more important part. That the village would enter into an agreement with Dutchess Wastewater Authority for sale of water to the water authority for the Hoffman Farms project as described in the town, read its planning board resolutions. And then at the rate again of 1.525 times current village rate. The village rate may be increased from time to time. And contingent, we have a lot of contingencies, it's not, this is just not going to fly forward. One is the county legislature has to create a zone of assessment encompassing the project. There has to be an execution agreement for sale of water with the authority acceptable to the village. That's the form we looked at, including terms acceptable to the village regarding billing, maintenance, service area payment, and other issues required by the village for the provision of water. Three, construction and dispatch to the project developer, required water infrastructure, including but not limited to the extension of water main from an existing terminus on Old Farm Road to the project along Old Farm Road to Route Nine South to facilitate a loop. And submission of other, and submission of an offer of session in form and substance acceptable to the village attorney to convey the infrastructure and any required easements to the village for one dollar. The establishment of escrow account by the developer for other project to develop, to cover all related and legal and engineering expenses related to preparation and agreement, engineering design, regulatory approvals relating to the provision of order by, for the project. Five, review and approval by the village engineering design and construction of proposed agreement. Approval by council to the village and the terms of proposed agreement and all provisions related to sale of water. Issuance of all other necessary approvals and permits required for the village to sell water to the water authority for the project. So what I'd like to do is, to me, the core of the agreement is that the rate is being offered at the 1.525. And then all these other contingencies, they're all linked. We're not just going to say, oh, if they can't build the main, too bad. They, they have to build the main, the loop has to occur, the billing and maintenance and all those things, the infrastructure is all at their cost. And that's, yes, that's what we're trying to stay here. And I think in order for them to move forward and for us to move forward, this is the first, the next step. But it's going to be one of many, many, many hours of hard work. But I think before I put it up for a motion or a resolution here, I'd welcome any, I mean, Steve, you've given a lot of input. Let's just kick around a little bit.
Any question as far as, I don't know, we talked to Dutchess County or Kirchhoff about the phasing of this. So is their intention, maybe this is premature at this point, I'm not sure, but is their intention is to put the main on Hoffman Road connected to Route Nine before they start construction of Hoffman Farm? Or do you see where I mean? Because are, or did they go to the master meter and then develop it and then connect to Route Nine? I mean, is there any provisions of, you know, what comes first? So I would, as part of our negotiation maybe is term for this too, to connect that loop first. You know, and get the easement secured so we know that's settled, that in place and then, because I'm under the impression that Hoffman Farms is going to be phased as a development, won't be developed outright. So I think it's important to get that first. Phase for us in place was just the loop and the connection and securing of the easement to that. I don't know if this was discussed.
Well, I think you're right. The infrastructure has to exist for them to probably have a main to come off. And we wouldn't want to allow them to build something that's not compliant with what we're looking for. Because then they might say, oh, we're not doing it. You know, it's a, so somehow there has to be.
Like put the, put the, the main in and complete the loop first.
Yes, so just complete the loop first. If for some reason the project goes south, we'd still have a loop.
Yeah.
Or doesn't realize for 20 years or 30 years, whatever. I don't think it'll take that long.
Yeah, essentially it's an engineering question, but it would be at our insistence that we just said would be, we want the loop.
I guess kind of for me, that's what makes the rate.
But quite frankly, oh, yeah, yeah. But honestly, I think they really get the benefit. They, they know they need a loop too. It's better for them. So I think that's one reason they're not doing crazy.
I have a question. Has a lot of something put in or given by the aftermath of the existing town customers? And, you know, the, you know, they're going to come to the board. Or they're, you know, and like you said before, our, we had talked before, they'll have to form a district. But if they form a district and then we, we make a, we do something very similar. That's going to have an effect on the bottom line.
No, that's one reason we've done all this work. It's one reason we've done all this work is because we have to analyze, A, the fairness, then the financial impact and the benefit to the village, if there is one or not. And that's why I'm really being specific here. This is about a million dollars worth of infrastructure that the village isn't going to have to spend any money for. And then we market our water into that web. Whereas in the other town customers, at some point in our history, we constructed the mains, constructed the taps. And, and then, like we said earlier, we still have the liability if something goes wrong out there. Whereas here, only for the main running down where we have, if the main broke, we'd go fix it. If it's in the system, in the project itself, in, inside their development, it wouldn't be our problem, it'd be theirs. There probably would have to be something in, I think I saw something extended wastewater authority. We wouldn't want them to sit there with a broken something and not fixing it. So we'd have to have some teeth where they would, we'd be able to go in and do it.
Making some of the infrastructure that you're showing, the developer would put in anyway, regardless, in system water. So I mean, I understand the dollar value, but for developer, any developer would put in his own infrastructure, his own cost. So I don't really see that. I mean, I see the 93,075 for the main to the road spur, but I'm sure there's other costs associated within the numbers that you had given that would add up to the number, but I don't think we would ever be required to put in infrastructure in a private development. We didn't do it in Knollwood or Maze Land or Red Oak Commons.
Well, I would disagree a bit. Like in Maze Land, we had the foresight, the developer did pay the cost to extend the main. And I forget what the linear foot run was, but it was not done at the water customer or village's expense.
So what's that?
I, what you're saying is partially true, but I think it's, what I'm saying is in the past, for that two-time rate, we did incur the cost of getting the water there and all the repair costs. We don't have that here, as I see it.
And in addition, there's a bunch of administrative, a bunch of administrative costs that we don't have because we're not sending out the bills, we're not collecting the, the water bills, right? So it's basically one bill as opposed to individual bills which we would get on a village or town level.
So Steve, I think that would be, that's why we're spending so much time on this and have spent nine months, you know, we've been. Did the capacity cover.
I'm just bringing up the fact that we are going, we, we, the board are going to have to put up with it, you know?
Yeah.
People are going to come in.
But if one does, like I keep saying, I've heard the number within that homeowners group, what it'll be charged by the authority to bill, read and maintain. It, it's, they're going to be paying more than, than you think.
But that's not really, I don't think that has a, anything to do with what we're, you know? If they charge two or three times the amount that we're charging, that's their business. We're just providing the water.
We have the commodity.
Yeah, we're just selling, we, what they charge their people.
I know, but I think it flashes back to if you're a town customer out east and you're paying two times. These people might be in the pain more than that. It's, it's, but anyway. I thought, I would like to move forward. There are a web of contingencies, but I think we need to take some definitive steps, set the rate and then work the contingencies out. It's, you know, we're saying that we want the loop, the loop should go first. And I don't know, Jay, and you're mellifluous, mellifluous. Do you feel like looking at that resolution there and reading it a little bit more word for word for us? I, I can give you a mic if you like.
Ready to go? I, I should, I'll be late, don't worry about it. I'll just start at the wheres.
Okay.
And this is the one, this where is the town planning board, is that the, okay. Whereas the town planning board acting as lead agency in a coordinated review of Hoffman Farms residential development project has adopted determination of non-significance in its granted conditional subdivision, site plan, and special use permit approval to the project as described as the town planning board conditional approval resolution dated August 15, 2016, parenthetic the project or Hoffman Farms project. And whereas the village of Red Oak has previously indicated its intent to sell water for the Hoffman Farms project. And whereas the project is outside of the village waters, water service area. And whereas the board has reviewed an estimated cost associated with serving. And whereas, the board has reviewed and estimated costs associated with serving the residential users within the proposed Hoffman Farms project, including the assumption that the DCWWA will be responsible for billing and collection, and that the developer will be responsible for all construction and installation costs associated with the water system connection as recommended by the village engineer. And whereas, it appears that charging a water rate to the Duchess County Water and Wastewater Authority, DCWWA, for the project at a multiplier of 1.525 over the then-current village water rate, where such water, which such rate will rise as base village rate increases over time, would be in the best interests of the village, subject to the conditions set forth herein and subject to review and approval as to the terms and conditions of such water supply agreement. Now, therefore being resolved by the Village Board of Trustees and the Village of Red Hook, that the Village of Red Hook intends to enter into an agreement with the DCWWA for the sale of water to the DCWWA for the Hoffman Farms project as such project is described in the Town of Red Hook Planning Board's Resolutions Conditional Approval dated August 15, 2016, at a rate of 1.525 times the then-current village water rate, as such village water rate may be increased from time to time, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the creation by the Duchess County Legislature of a zone of assessment encompassing the project. Number two, execution of agreement for the sale of water with the DCWWA in form and substance acceptable to the village, including terms acceptable to the village regarding billing, maintenance, service area, prepayment, and any other issues required by the village for the provision of water. Number three, construction at the expense of the project developer of the required water infrastructure, including but not limited to the extension of the water main from the existing terminus on Old Farm Road to the project and along Old Farm Road to continue to Route 9 South to facilitate a loop and submission of an offer of session in form and substance acceptable to the village attorney to convey the infrastructure and any required easements to the village for $1. Established, number four, establishment of an escrow account by the developer of the project to cover all related legal and engineering expenses related to the preparation of an agreement, engineering design, and regulatory approvals relating to the provision of water for the project. Number five, review and approval by the village engineer of the design and construction of the proposed agreement. Number six, approval by council to the village of the terms of the proposed agreement and all provisions related to the sale of water. Finally, number seven, issuance of all other necessary approvals and permits required for the village to sell water to the DCWWA for the project.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes, sir.
I'm just reading some of the first page again myself. It's more of a dramatic thing, but in the, the now therefore be resolved paragraph, folks. The lesson reads a little confusingly to me. It talks about 1.525 times the then-current village water rate. As such village rate may be increased from time to time. Then there's a comma, subject to the following conditions. In my mind, it sounded like the rate increase is subject to conditions. Maybe it should say and subject to following, something more definitive there.
And be subject to the following.
Yeah. What do you think, up and down the line?
Nah, I agree.
And then also in the third line of the same paragraph there.
Okay.
The two words, the force, it'd be the fourth, the, it'd just be just a title there.
DCW.
Or actually take the hour.
It'll take one, the first the.
Yeah.
Also, and on the, uh, fourth whereas.
One, two.
Where it says including the assumption that the DCWWA will be responsible for billing and collection. Since billing and collection, since it's noted there, I also like to add billing, common collection, and maintenance.
Yeah, good.
I like to see the word maintenance.
I agree. So see that, the billing, common collection, and. I agree.
And. I don't know if Jay's copy has it or not, but. Hopefully, he, he added the word according to mine.
Prepayment?
Right.
Yeah, he, he, we'll let it, we'll forgive him on that.
Okay.
Mine said payment.
Uh, just says, and payment, did I say prepayment?
Yeah, you said prepayment.
Yeah, it's just payment.
He must have a bill on his mind or something.
I was, hey, I'm trying to look out for it.
Good call. Well, what I'd like to do, we had a lot of discussion. I'd like to offer it in the form of a motion, I'll ask for a second, we can have some more discussion. I think we kind of hit high points and technical points, but I'll say one down, made a motion. Is there a second out there? And is there any discussion? Like I said, I'll talk first, I guess. I, I would like to see us move ahead. Like I keep saying, my view is we're setting a rate, and we got a lot on it to do. I mean, we'd like to have looped customers and real claims agreeing with the water authority. I, I see that's probably six or seven months of work, means like it's not. Somebody's gonna have to sit with the authority, take that template, and took it a little bit, developer. Roll call. Yeah, what do we have on the backside here? Let's see, any other discussion? Jay's asking for a roll call, I will look, yes, Mr. Zarchuk.
Yes.
Ms. Norris.
Yep.
Uh, Mr. Kowalczuk.
Yes.
Mr. Trent.
Yes.
Thank you, Carrie's, now we have.
Seven, eight months work?
Yes. All right, let me add one more thing here, guys. I don't think, I don't think we need to go to executive session tonight. We can go to, so we'll take that off a little of your time right here. Uh, the local law zoning map. Let me, Brent, do you have your packet and order there? Let me see if I have this packet. I buried myself in the water stuff. So just to repeat, we had the public hearing, Brent said they did secret part one. Our attorney says they've indicated in the resolution they submitted that I handed out that will address the secret part two, negative declaration part. Jay, he's our secret part two expert.
All right.
I'm looking for mine here.
Want me to read the neg deck for you?
Would you please, sir?
Date of adoption, September 12, 2016, tonight. This notice is issued pursuant to Part 617 of the Implementing Regulations pertaining to Article 8 State Environmental Quality Review Act of the Environmental Conservation Law. Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook as lead agency has determined that the proposed action described below will not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. The name of the action is Adoption of Local Law to Amend the Zoning Map. The seeker status is designated as a type one action. A conditioned negative declaration is not issued. Description of the action. The proposed local law amends the village zoning map to eliminate land conservation, the LC District, and to align zoning district boundary lines with property lines. The text of the zoning law is also amended to conform to the new zoning map. The location is throughout the, and again, I think it should probably say the Village of Red Hook as opposed to Red Hook, which may indicate the town, okay?
Okay, where are you there, Jay?
Location.
Okay, so village, all right.
Right. Reasons supporting this determination. The village seeks to expand opportunities for infill development within the village by extending the neighborhood mixed-use district to an additional 12.43 acres of land identified as tax lot number 134801-6272-09-205603. This, you guys remember that?
Yeah.
Okay. This land is currently the only land remaining in the land conservation LC District. The village finds providing for additional development within the village, which is already densely developed, will alleviate pressure on the development of farmland in the suburban and rural parts of the Town of Red Hook. This land can be serviced by municipal water and a community sewer system and will not result in a significant adverse impact on municipal resources or groundwater. Wetlands and buffer areas located on the parcel are already protected by an environmental easement in favor of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. The remaining portions of the 12.43 acre lot may be developed consistent with the regulations in the Neighborhood Mixed Use District, which encourage walkable mixed-use development. The new zoning designation will also permit a portion of the 12.43 acre parcel to be used for development of the village wastewater system. The use of the property for the construction of a municipal wastewater system and its proposed rezoning to permit the use of land for a wastewater system was the subject of a negative declaration adopted by the village on February 8, 2016. The village has examined all other potential environmental impacts and found no evidence of any potential significant impact, including, without limitation, potential impacts on water quality, air quality, agriculture, energy consumption, traffic patterns, or community or neighborhood character. Rest is contact information, so there we go.
Thank you, Jay.
Yes, sir.
So we did insert for the part there, on location, village of Red Hook. And let's see. So actually, um, the neg deck, neg deck steps off the part two. Counselor's review, then check for us to make it, little track there.
Typically at the end.
Page 10.
I didn't hear the question, Danny.
Signature page.
The part one was signed on page 13.
So it goes to 10.
So it goes to 10, so most signature requirements is big.
The way she designed it is in the resolution there is the knowledge of the neg deck.
Right.
I think what we could do then is, um, if we're gonna look at this, these are the zoning maps. We thought that this is the area that would be NMU. Thank you, guys. I think this, the progress, we're talking about, it would be subject to. If it please the board, I think we can move ahead to the votes. We had the public hearing, we've had the neg decks recited, the laws circulated. Have you ever seen, he gave us, did he give us the local law? No more?
We need the resolution first, then a local law.
I was gonna do the resolution, but.
I think it's not all in one here.
Would you like to? Do you wanna read that out loud, the local law?
Really?
Well, it sounded like you said you wanted to.
This is the local laws, the resolutions, so I could read the local law, but.
Well, I thought you were saying you wanted to.
It's not the same.
It's been circulated to the board.
So this is local law number?
She said four.
And I recap our meeting too, but basically changed the LC incorporated into the NMU. There's some, there's some change that we're, we're doing. Section five, Subsection B two, section 200-12, the zoning law, including its ability to the E's. Also an ending permitted sign, section seven, zoning law, removing all the, that's just the LC District. That's basically the intent of the local law. And having the map reflect all the changes and align the property lines with the zoning, the zoning district for the property.
Yeah, I don't know if it came in the mind of the board members, but the second page where it talks about signs. At first, what does the old LC District have to do with signs and our sign ordinance? We're not changing our sign ordinance. There was a section that referred to signs within the LC. So by removing the LC, you take out some, a couple of subparagaths. There's actually just being renumbered, there's no change in the text of our permitted sign code. It's just resetting the orientation.
I think when that section referred, it was in section B, and then it's all the other sections.
Yeah, they're bouncing up. That's where counsel has section 238, big A, five, and small a, so they're all bouncing up. Go down to the straight forward. Somewhere we have a resolution. Who's in the mind of reading me clip data work right there?
I'm ready.
Sure, you wanna read it, Chris?
Sure. The meeting of the Village of Red Hook was convened in public session at the Village Hall, 7467 South Broadway, on September 12, 2016. The meeting was called to order by Mayor Glendale, and the rope, and the rope wall being, upon rope being called, upon the present, which we are all present. Resolution to adopt a local law to amend the official zoning map of the Village of Red Hook, which the local law will be number four, 2016. Whereas the proposed form of a local law entitled a local law to amend the official zoning map of the Village of Red Hook, the proposed local law, was presented to the Village Board of Trustees of the Village of Red Hook, the board, on August 11, 2016. Whereas a full environmental assessment form, EAF, dated August 11, 2016, has been prepared on behalf of the board. Whereas on August 11, 2016, the board classified the proposed local law as a type one action under seeker and determined it only, the only involved agency. And whereas, the board has reviewed the EAF and information obtained through its own knowledge, the public hearing, its consult, consultants, and other agencies has sufficient, sufficient information on which to base a determination of significance. Whereas the board has considered the criteria contained in six NYCRR 617.7, and thoroughly analyzed all identified relevant areas of the environmental concern. Whereas pursuant to section 239M of the general municipal law, the proposed local law was deferred to the Department of Planning and Development, which responded on September 2, 2016, as a matter of local concern. Whereas a local, a duly noticed public hearing held on September 12, 2016, during which. during which all those wish to speak were heard. Now, therefore be it resolved, the board as follows. The board hereby adopts the attached notice of neg declaration funding that the adoption of proposed local law will not result in a significant adverse environmental impact, and that a draft environmental impact statement will not be prepared. The board hereby adopts proposed local law as local law four, 2016. That the village clerk be, she hereby is directed to enter said local law in the minutes of the said meeting in the village code of the village of Red Hook, to number the local law in accordance with the order of following of the Department of State to give due notice to the adoption of said local law to the said authority of state, and take all their actions as may be required by law. The village clerk may be, and is she hereby is directed to notice, to file notice to the negative declaration with the environmental notice bulletin. The question of the adoption of their foregoing resolution was duly put to vote on the roll call, which resulted in, as follows.
So Brent, would you like to move, what, what grade is this going on?
I think that would make the motion to adopt the resolution that is ran by city call, um, without local law for 2016.
Is it your second?
Second.
Jay, had you been up, is there?
Second paragraph, whereas full environmental assessment form should be FEAF.
Instead of just EAF?
Full environmental assessment form, FEAF, yes.
Thank you. So, motion and second, it looks like a roll call. I will, yes. Mr. Kowalczek. Uh, Ms. Norris.
Yep.
Mr. Trapp.
Yes, sir.
And Ms. Zarchuk.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. I think we have hit the agenda items. Okay, so we have a workshop set for Thursday, which, um, I think we should keep on. We have the block grant issue and a few other things. And then, um, I thought too, I don't know if the board, you know, usually, for general comments for the board and, um, I know locally, the Coast Guard and Hudson River Anchorage is are making some news, and certain municipalities are taking stances. I've been reading up on it. I'm not suggesting tonight we do it, but I know the board's following. I do some settling on Hudson, and use Hudson for a mountain. Um, it seems like the issue has some problems in my mind, but if you want to think about that and take a stance of, no, we, um, we don't have directory of advantage, but we do benefit by being here and there. And then, any other thoughts? Yes. What's on your mind, there's Steve?
Uh, next thing, and October falls on August 8.
Is it?
I don't know. I'm looking for the calendar.
Usually goes to the 17th.
Seventh is the, uh, terms for man's day.
So we have to have the, um, topic here, we develop the record for the 21st as the due date.
My thought, at the workshop Thursday, we'll timeline out what we need to, and then. August 8 is the 10th.
Is that, is that a national holiday?
February. It's not highlighted here.
Is it?
I think I'd push it back to the 17th, I think my thought. I was gonna do some, um, I was just 17th, so that matches what people can do. Yeah, that sounds good. Okay. To a little quick move, all favor moving the next, something made to 17th October, you good? All favor?
Yes.
And thank you, Steve. Anything else to put on the board? Pull a comment.
I'll leave you alone on the Hoffman thing for now.
Okay.
Um, you mentioned some of the, uh, storm drains. I was wondering if you're looking at the one on Old Post Road. That thing is hazardous. Somebody on a bicycle and motorcycle is going to get wiped out in that thing.
Where is it, at the, at the intersection of Park Avenue or?
Memorial Park. If you're going north and you veer off onto it, uh, the road kind of rises and comes down, but then you got a two-inch drop. Then you got the length of the drain and then two, two-inch pop-up.
Could you be more specific? Cause we'll go look at it.
Is it right, right at the?
See, you've got a couple CBS, right there where you turn in.
Almost opposite the driveway.
Not this, this far down.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
So right at the Y kind of like?
Yes.
Yeah, every time I go that way, I avoid that.
You have to swerve.
Everybody goes to the.
You know, somebody in a car, even if you hit it, you'll be able to hold yourself. But if it were a bicycle, like especially these, these wonderful tiny tires, or motorcycle, they're not, you know, it's gonna, they're gonna be sideways, upside down.
Okay.
That should be a priority, I think.
Brent's already making notes, we'll get it to how the guys. A lot of times that upper layer of brick corrodes and collapses, and it's not too big a deal to shim them back up.
Also, you might want to look at 90 Cambridge Drive.
Is that a catch basin?
Catch basin, that thing's fallen.
I know.
I think that was.
We have, we're in there.
Cambridge Drive or Cambridge Road? Harvard, Cambridge Drive?
Cambridge Drive. Sir.
Let me go through my, uh, pile of car spots here, too.
I think that was on the list.
Yeah, I think it was, huh?
Looks like we hit everything that was in my folder here. Been a long one, but thanks, gentlemen and ladies, and audience, and TV. So, um.
Couple of things, right?
Pardon me?
Couple of things left, right?
No, we're good. We have to do the, uh, financial part of our roll. I saw vouchers somewhere. And that would be, I would have to have a motion to pay bills after audit.
So moved.
All right. All fit, each to it. And, uh, Kowalczek, ready to go?
I am. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn the seat names speaking.
Second.
I'll second it, but I would say I think it was very productive. I thank everybody, and, uh, all favor of journey.
Aye.
Good night, everybody.